Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. Um, Mr. Sagorino will start at three eight three, please.
You're on mute, Paul.
Paul, you're on mute?
I'm set.
There you go.
Uh, Selectman Priest, do you want to just read the usual pre-meeting entrance? You're on mute.
Go, Nick.
Okay, great. Uh, so pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, funding certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter thirty A, section twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the town of Burlington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCA Government Cable Access Television, BCA Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by commenting on the BCA Government Coverage Facebook Live page and the chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at seven eight one two seven zero one six three five. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Paul?
Uh, just as a reminder, Mr. Chairman, as a remote meeting, we'll need roll call votes this evening.
Yes.
Okay, first up, we have some appointments in the finance area. So I'm gonna turn it over to John Denizio for an update to the board.
Thank you, Paul. So I have recommendations for two candidates tonight for positions in the accounting office. They feel like they were a long, long time coming. Uh, one of the, one of these positions, you may remember, was vacated back in the fall, and we started the process to reconstitute that position and move it from the selectmen's office into the accounting field, uh, where, into the accounting office where it made more sense, uh, and for better integration, um, with the budgeting process and procurement. Uh, and then in, in January, we went to town meeting, and we reclassified two of the positions, uh, to recreate this position with a new job description and whatnot. In the process for, for hiring both of these positions, um, seems like they started a million years ago, but it was, it was back, back in the early winter, right after January town meeting, pre-COVID, when we started, you know, um, first, I'd like to thank Joanne for her, her guidance and shepherding us through this process, and also for her going above and beyond with these job postings and looking, uh, to post at some graduate schools on their career service sites, uh, to see if we could maybe get someone that was, uh, currently going through graduate school that would be interested in, in, uh, policy or public administration. The two positions I'm bringing forward to you tonight, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want to do them separate or together?
Uh, we'll do it separate.
Okay. Also, the first position, um, that I want to bring forward tonight is the position that I was just speaking about, where the incumbent had left out in the fall, we reconstituted the position, uh, we, it's, it's a financial and purchasing analyst, and the candidate performing tonight is, is Brian Lynch. This, we had a very competitive pool of applicants, there was twenty-plus people that applied, we interviewed seven or eight, um, candidates, we had an outstanding group of finalists. Uh, I know that, that this group has said in the past that the trend is Burlington attracts the best of the best, well, I can tell you that that trend continues. Uh, the pool was excellent, and, and, and I'm recommending, um, Brian Lynch for this position. We had a group that interviewed, consisted of Whitney, Joanne, and I. Uh, we did very thorough interviews, we did follow-up interviews, finalist interviews, um, and Mr., Mr. Lynch came out on top. Mr. Lynch has spent his entire, uh, he's a graduate of William Smith College, uh, what, I'm saying, Hobart in William Smith College, is currently pursuing his, his MBA in the Eisenberg School of Management at the University of Mass. He has spent his entire career in, in public service, he was, spent some time at the State Treasurer's Office, and now comes to us from the Monmouth Building Authority. We're, uh, very lucky to have him, and that's my recommendation.
Thank you, John. Um, so we'll start the way we usually do, we'll start with questions first, uh, then we'll vote on this. So we'll start with, uh, Bob, Mr. Hogan, any questions on this candidate?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, again terrific resume, as usual. Um, I noticed he comes to us from MSBA, so, um, thinking that it could be, uh, valuable to us, uh, with the school, school department, actually, uh, in future years, so, yeah, a couple of great-looking candidates there, I'm pleased with the both of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I think, I agree with Selectman Runyon, having someone who, uh, has experience with the MSBA, uh, i- it's great for the town, but, uh, John, I have one quick question about the position, not the candidate himself. Just, just the clarification, the, the, the purchasing analyst side of this, um, job, that's to streamline purchasing for the town, uh, so that we actually save money, is that correct?
Uh, yes, can be, the, uh, the, this position was strictly just purchasing back when it was in the, uh, selectmen's office, and what we're trying to do is more professionalize that department. Uh, you may remember that Whitney was, uh, is now the Budget Director and Chief Procurement Officer, and when Kate left, we reconstituted that position to be able to work, uh, with Whitney on both aspects of those, be able to, uh, weave in the purchasing function with the budget function and accounting functions, be more efficient.
Thank you. Do you want to make that, you know, inference that this is, this is gonna save us money in the long run by having one person overseeing all this? Um, so I just want to make that clear, if anybody might be watching, that, you know, th- this is a, this, this position actually saves us money in the long run, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Sagorino, any comments?
Uh, yes, I'm very pleased to be able to make this appointment, Mr. Chairman, uh, Whitney's been doing, uh, two jobs plus John Denizio's job for a long time now, so, we're looking forward to getting her some help, um, and, uh, with John's recommendation, you know, I wish to appoint Brian Lynch to the position of Financial Purchasing Analyst of the Town of Burlington, and requested the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period and roll call vote.
Or just a roll call?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second by?
Second.
Mr. Tigges, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Priest?
Aye.
Mr. Tigges?
Aye.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Betty, five zero zero on that one.
Thank you, I have it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Denizio, we'll right onto the second one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the second position, again, in the accounting office, integral part of the team, started quite some time ago with the announcement of the retirement of, of a long-term employee here. Again, excellent pool of candidates, you know, twenty-plus candidates, we interviewed, uh, three or four as finalists. I want to thank Deb Callahan for helping out with this search, too, uh, and I'm recommending for the position of Accounting Technician, uh, Ms. Karen Cole. Mrs. Cole is a graduate from Framingham State College, and she holds a master's degree in management from Leslie College. Mrs. Cole brings a wealth of finance and office management experience to us, has that extensive experience in the insurance industry, and has spent some time in the marketing, technology, and most recently in the construction industry. Um, Mrs. Cole has been doing this for a long time and be a classist of our department.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Um, we'll just go through real quick again, if anybody has any questions, uh, we'll start with Mr. Priest this time.
No questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Tigges?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
No questions.
Mr. Hogan?
No questions.
Beautiful. Mr. Sagorino, right to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for the board, this is the, uh, part-time position in the accounting office, formerly held by Jimmy, for those who knew, are familiar with the office. Uh, and with John's recommendation, I wish to appoint Karen Cole to the position of Aging Technician, uh, at, at Town of Burlington, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
I'll vote.
Motion by Bob, second by Jimmy again. We're going to, order Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda? Oh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So once again, Betty, five zero zero in favor.
I have it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Paul, we'll move right along to, uh, three eighty-four.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, tonight we have John and Whitney here, as well as, uh, Mr. Sanchez, um, and what we want to do is just give you an update on the warrant articles, um, we've seen some changes, we've seen some withdrawals, there are some that, uh, we wish to have the board re-vote, and at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to John Whitney, uh, so they can give you an update as to where we stand on the article.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So, as Paul said, we have in front of you to vote tonight, we have, uh, three articles to vote, we have three articles that we need to re-vote now that they've been postponed, and then after that, there'll still be three outstanding articles. What I'd like to do at the end, after we vote, is to just review, um, the status of all the articles and, and, and ask if we're gonna take a position on any others. I know Mr. Sanchez is here to speak to one of the articles, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to start with the articles we're gonna vote tonight first?
Yes.
Okay, summary, before we, Mr. Sanchez, turn it over to Mr. Sanchez, the first article is Article seven dash eleven, and that was the vehicle replacement, uh, article. At the meeting on, um, April thirteenth, Mr. Sanchez was in to talk about all of his articles, and the board had asked him to go take a look, reprioritize. At that point, Mr. Sagorino asked all department heads to do the same, you know, in your packet, a memo from Whitney, that after all, after all department heads reviewed and reprioritized all of their warrant articles, there are over a million doll, over one point one million dollars' worth of articles that are being, uh, proposed to be postponed until the January town meeting. Um, this one article was held, and Mr. Sanchez would still like to move forward with this, uh, so we just needed to come back and view it again and, and take a vote.
Great. Thank you, John. Um, Mr. Sanchez, would you like to comment on this?
Uh, yes, please, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, thank you very much for, uh, for having me tonight here, uh, and thank you to the administration for giving us a chance to actually go over our priorities here in the department, because, uh, uh, through that process, we're able to actually come up with what we believe is the articles that we need to pursue at this point, and the ones that we're able to postpone in the future, three of which, uh, you're gonna re-vote tonight, uh, but I, um, feel very strongly about the equipment that we've been, uh, asking for over the years, uh, particularly when it comes to, uh, this snow removal equipment, uh, where, um, as you know, over the years, we've lost, uh, many contractors, uh, private contractors are, are harder and harder to find. Uh, at one point, we had about eighty pieces of contracted equipment, and now we're down to half of that. Thankfully, at the same time, we have been able to increase our town fleet, not just DPV, but also recreation, from about twenty pieces to, uh, now we have about forty, so, uh, that's what has really kept us in the game, uh, during the snow and ice season, and that's why I feel strongly about disreplacements, uh, within the department, which are badly needed.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Um, we'll start with questions first, so Paul, do you have a comment you'd like to? Any comments before we get with the questions?
Uh, I don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll start with Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, John, um, not just on this one, but, um, what do you see moving forward over the next couple of, uh, fiscal years as far as purchasing vehicles? Are you gonna continue to increase it?
Uh, so what we've been doing is we have, uh, another, uh, large truck coming up for next year, um, which is a large piece of equipment, probably to the tune of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, uh, and then we have the common replacements that we have as part of the ten-year plan. Then soon after that, our, uh, actually, our equipment is gonna take a little recess, it's gonna drop to, uh, to a lot less than the half a million we have maintained, uh, as the town has done a great job over the last ten years to bring up our equipment to, to standards, so there's gonna be a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel coming up, uh, although we have another year of probably around the same half a mil.
Thank you, John, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Sanchez, um, obviously, looking at the list of vehicles on the, um, on the article, some are just in severe disrepair, or just for sheer time, right, body rot, or frame rot, I should say, um, the one that I, I wonder if could be maybe held until January is, uh, H thirty-six, the mini excavator replacement for backhoe, is there any immediate need for this that we could, that we couldn't stave it off, perhaps?
Uh, no, in fact, uh, I, I will agree with you that this, this is one piece that may, may weigh, the only reason that, uh, is still on the list is because this large piece of equipment, it'd take a long time for them to get, so, uh, so if we, even if truck, for instance, any of the trucks that we'll order now, uh, we will be getting, hopefully, around January of next year, so when you get a large piece, uh, say you do it in January, we may, and that, I use the word may, we may lose part of the season, uh, in trying to obtain the vehicle because of the bidding process and everything we have to go through, so that's the only reason that one is still on the list, it's just a timing thing. Um, but yes, we could potentially rent for another year, or for two more years, uh, to do the work, so, uh, um, and I will agree with you on that particular one.
Comparatively against the, against the cost of purchasing a new mini excavator, what would the rental costs roughly, like, I mean, if we're doing, you know, uh, uh, an ROI analysis, you know, can you, can you just give me a little insight, like, does it make sense to rent it two more years, or does it make sense to buy now, like, what's the difference?
So, it obviously depends on how long we have them, these pieces, uh, they will run between two and four thousand dollars a week, when you rent these large pieces of equipment, and it depends on the availability of what they have at the time you're looking to rent, you know, and, because that will determine the size. Uh, but again, like I said, this is one of the items that we have the potential for doing that, if, if there was an item that needed to be held back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanchez, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and, uh, welcome, uh, Mr. Sanchez. Um, I, I appreciate, John, that you've, uh, you and, and other department heads have, um, you, you've really sharpened your pencil since our, our, our review of these original warrant articles, and I, and I appreciate that, I see you've postponed a couple of items voluntarily, um. I, I, I too would agree with, uh, Selectman Priest, and, John, I would ask that you try your best, uh, to keep that backhoe running for, until we, uh, can get a handle on, you know, what our finances are gonna look like in the future, but otherwise, I'm, I'm okay with the other, replacing the other pieces of equipment here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Uh, and just, just to clarify, I'm not, I'm just following up on what, uh, Selectman Runyon said, uh, the, the backhoe that we had is, is already gone, because it was to the point that it had to be, so that one is already gone, uh, so the point right now going forward should be whether or not we'd rent, uh, one, uh, to perform the work.
I, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to hold, I still like to hold off on the purchase of that, um, at least temporarily.
Okay. You all set?
Sure.
I am.
Okay. Mr. Tigges?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, now, John, I just, I just think it's a credit to the central maintenance, uh, the garage staff, uh, two of these vehicles, one is nineteen years old, and the other is, uh, twenty-seven years old, so, I think they're doing a pretty good job at maintaining what we have. Um, I, I, I am, again, also concerned with the unknown, uh, as Mr. Runyon stated, we just don't know what our future is, and whatever we can do to stave off that big purchase, uh, you know, I'd like to see what we can do, but, um, otherwise, I think, like, like Mr. Priest said, these are all safety hazards, um, and they, they need, these need to be replaced, uh, problems, rotting frames, so I, I concur with that, that side of the argument.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Um, so my thoughts on this, um, real quick, um, like, like Mr. Runyon said, I'm very happy with the way you've cut down the, uh, the warrant article to where it is now, um, I will be totally honest with you, I'm not a big man on, sometimes, we've been very fortunate right now over the winter months, uh, I'd have a lot of snow, but if you figure we get a couple, uh, really big storms, and we have those trucks for three or four weeks, Mr. Sanchez already said that it's roughly, what did you say, four thousand dollars a week? You know, by the time we get done, we could be spending twenty to thirty thousand dollars in one winter on, on a, on a backhoe, if we need it. Um, so, I think what we should do is, we should vote, which I have in front of me. Paul, do you have them, all the vehicles in, if you would like to vote them? Um, it seems like, vote them all individually? Can we do it that way, or is there just one article to vote on? How does that work?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's commonly set up as one article, uh, but what, I guess what I would suggest is, if it works, Mr. Sanchez, and the members of the board is, um, if you're willing to, um, give a positive vote on the whole article, I think Mr. Sanchez would be willing to hold off on, um, extending your term to that backhoe, in other words, similar to other budgets, where we have the authority to purchase it, uh, but John won't move ahead, and as you said, he'll rent for a period of time, and we can come back to the board and basically update you as, uh, you know, whether or not financially it's a good time for that purchase as we move forward in the fall, if that makes any sense.
That makes sense. Mr. Sanchez, does that make sense to you?
Uh, yeah, it'd be perfectly fine to put that one in whole.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean, is the dollar amount to the, uh, warrant article itself get amended?
No, from what Mr. Sagorino just said was, we would vote the whole article in, and then Mr. Sanchez would use his discretion on when he would purchase that backhoe service, that backhoe for us.
Okay, yeah, I just want clarification on that, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna go real quick with the, just in, okay, if everybody's all right with that. Mr. Hogan?
I'm okay.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes, I'm okay.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes, I'm okay.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. So now, Paul, uh, now we can have a vote on this, but I need a motion on this, am I? So could I get a motion on this from somebody?
I'll make, I'll make a motion if you'd like, Joe, to, uh, approve the warrant article as printed.
Motion by Mike, second by?
I'll make that.
All right, Bob got it.
Second by Bob, okay, now we'll go for a vote on this. Um, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah.
Mr. Miranda? Yes. Five zero zero ready for that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, um, who's next, Paul?
Mr. Denizio. Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Uh, the next two articles for us to vote tonight, Articles nineteen and twenty, and these are articles for funding our two non-union compensation plans, um, what, the first one is the, uh, what we refer to as the AMP, that's the Administrative and Professionals Compensation Plan, that's all, that covers all of our non-union employees that work more than twenty hours, uh, for example, all of our department heads, uh, it's anybody that's not recognized, it's not a recognized union, but they do bargain collectively, uh, they, uh, bargained with, with, with Paul, and they came up with a claim that's very similar to the other unions had, had in their, um, settlements, where there was gonna be a smaller increase on the scale, and, uh, a new step, and, a new step added is phased in over, uh, two years, so, the, the deal is for a one point five percent increase on all steps and all grades, and then a new step twelve added to all grades, uh, at half of it added on July first this year, and half of it added on June thirty, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The dollar amount is a hundred and two thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, and like the other unions, what we tried to do here was still stay within?
Excuse me, Mr. Denizio, could you say that number?
Yep, it's one oh two, five seven two.
Thank you, sorry.
Uh, so our goal here was to try to stay within, uh, the perimeters, uh, of le, of less than, uh, two point five, and the way we broke, the way we break it up and divvy it up, um, we have done that, and it satisfies the goal of, of the union and the town, and, uh, I think it's a good deal for our department heads, I think Paul and the group that negotiated with him did a good job. Um, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to do, go to twenty right away, or do you like to wait?
Um, why don't, why don't we vote on this one first, that way there won't get confusing, especially for myself?
Okay.
We'll do, we'll do one at a time, so, uh, we'll start with Mr. Runyon, any questions on this?
No questions.
Mr. Tigges?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Priest?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
No questions.
Okay, can I have a motion on this?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Bob, second by Jim? Okay. All right, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero ready in favor of warrant article nineteen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Denizio, you could go right to number twenty for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Article twenty is to fund the part-time compensation plan, so this covers all of the employees, uh, that work less than twenty hours, also covers, uh, seasonal employees, and our, our goal for this, similar to last year, is to, is twofolds, to, uh, have a, a wage adjustment, uh, but also keep a close eye on remaining competitive, and a close eye on staying above minimum wage, so, uh, the deal is the same as it was last year, gets us to the same point we were last year, and it costs, uh, four thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, any comment on this?
Uh, no further comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, gentlemen, uh, we'd like to make a motion on this, you wanna go with questions? Um, we'll start with the questions, Mr. Priest?
Uh, no questions, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Tigges?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Runyon?
No questions.
Mr. Hogan?
No questions.
Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that we approve this for the amount of four thousand six hundred, no, I'm sorry, four thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yeah.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Once again, Betty, five zero zero in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, John, do you have another one, or that, that was it, right?
Uh, that was it for the new ones tonight, and, um, uh, I might suggest that the revotes, maybe we do them collectively, um, there are three of them, if you'd like, uh, they're all in Mr. Sanchez's department, uh, I can identify them for you, uh, and if there are any questions, I'm sure Mr. Sanchez can help, shed some light on those, does that work?
I have no problem with it. Mr. Runyon, you okay with this? Yeah? Mr. Priest, you okay?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Yes, no problem.
Mr. Denizio, go right ahead.
So the reason that, uh, these are in front of you here tonight is after, uh, Mr. So the reason that, uh, these are in front of you here tonight is after, uh, Mr. Sagorino had asked all the department heads to reprioritize and take another look and sharpen their pencil, Mr. Sanchez went back and looked at and identified three items that he could put off to January, um, and those items are Article seven ten, which is drainage and stream, stream cleaning, two hundred thousand dollars. Article seven fourteen, Pine Haven roof repair for forty-five thousand dollars. Article seven sixteen, the Vinebrook, uh, filter repair for eighty thousand dollars. Uh, so Mr. Sanchez is here, if anybody has any questions, uh, but again, these were previously approved at the April thirteenth meeting, but since then been, uh, requested to be postponed, so that's why they're in front of you for a reboot.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Mr. Sanchez, any comment on this right now?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, gentlemen, I'll go real quick. Uh, Mr. Tigges, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, uh, Mr. Sanchez, that, uh, Vinebrook filter, um, I'm just a little concerned that we're putting that off because of our water situation. I mean, just, can you just explain that a little bit? That's all.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, uh, since, since, uh, we proposed this, uh, actually we have sort of good news in a way, uh, and I was gonna wait until, uh, the end, uh, with Paul to mention this, uh, we actually received the M, uh, the MEPA certificate for the larger project that we're trying to do to connect to the MWRA, uh, which now it, it leaves us with just one more process, which is, uh, Water Resources Commission, uh, water transfer we need to do to go from the, uh, uh, MWRA watershed to our watershed, uh, which we hope to obtain this year during this calendar year. So this is why I felt confident that we could wait on this, because if we, uh, joined the MWRA prior to the end of the year, then we could actually use their water, uh, next year, and then this wouldn't be as critical as has been until now. Um, we're moving forward also with, uh, the bidding of the Adams Street Water May, and we hope to complete that before the end of the calendar year. So with all these things coming into place, uh, I felt that this is something I could wait on. Um, not totally eliminated, because we never know what may happen, uh, but it was a postponement and, and I agree that if we could wait until like January, if we needed to do it, uh, at that point, it'd still be okay for us if we needed to rush to get this filter repaired, uh, but being that we have good news on the other end, uh, this may be money that we may not even need to spend in the future. But this is why I felt comfortable doing that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, yeah, that, that is good news. I was, and thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, um, uh, in the backup, uh, um, that I have in front of me, it has, uh, Article seven, uh, sixteen, the Town Hall Generator listed as being postponed. Is that not correct?
That is not correct. We, we're, we're actually moving forward with that generator. Uh, we were tinkering among, uh, different, uh, items that we were proposing, but this is not being proposed, uh, yet. So it is still on the plan to replace it during this fiscal year.
How old is that generator, John? I, it seems to me I've, uh, was replaced sometime, not terribly long ago.
Um, well, it had already been here fourteen years and it was there since I came in, uh, uh, and I, I, I think it goes back to when the building was renovated.
Right, okay. So you, you think it possibly be closer to twenty years then?
Uh, yep.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, Joe. Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
No, Jim stole my question.
How's it feel?
Sorry.
Retired guy's got nothing to do but ask questions. Uh, Mr. Priest, any questions on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Sanchez, just, just the one, uh, I know when I said that, it's always like a loaded thing. Um, but Article seven ten, the drains and stream cleaning, just to clarify, this doesn't mean that we won't be doing any drainage and stream cleaning. It just means that the scheduled drains and stream clean that we normally do, the funding for that is being held off, correct? So like if someone called and said, you know, the stream behind my house is clogged, you know, we'd be able to go out and clear it after that.
It, that, that's correct. Uh, I mean, this is not, this is the, this is the one that we paid for out of this two hundred thousand dollars for the one that we do with machine. So it's, it's like a different type of project, but if there's, uh, like today, say with the rain that we have, crews have been out today making sure that all the brooks are running, and if there's something clogged, that we'll, we'll, we'll fix it up. Yes. This is more like to remove the sand and silt that has, uh, been deposited on those brooks for a long time.
Right, and that's what I thought. I just wanna make sure that if anyone's watching, uh, you know, they hear us postponing drainage and stream cleaning, it's not that we're like not gonna do it this year at all, uh, but that, you know, obviously it pertains to larger machine. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's my question I had.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sagorino, any comment on this?
Uh, no further comment on this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this point, we'll need a, uh, motion? Mr. Denizios?
Well, I'm sorry. So, yeah, you would be looking for a motion to postpone Articles seven ten, seven fourteen, and seven sixteen.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion for this?
No moved.
Second.
No move, the seconded. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Excuse me. Five zero zero, Betty.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, um, where we off to here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before, before you move forward, I just wanna clarify something with John Denizio. Um, uh, John, seven dash twenty-nine, was that voted, uh, pri- uh, prior? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was voted on the thirteenth.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Denizio?
Mr. Chairman, so there is a, a, in your pocket, there was a list of all the warrant articles with the Board of Selectmen status on it. And after you take into account the five articles that have been withdrawn and the eleven articles that have been postponed, that leaves, and then there were three that were approved tonight and three revoked, that leaves three that would still be need to come back to the Board of Selectmen for a vote. One of those is the operating budget number, which we expect to get on Wednesday, uh, from final approval of Ways and Means. So we expect we could have that back for, for the next meeting on, uh, Monday, next Monday. And then the other two articles are Article twenty-four and twenty-five, which I expect you may hear some more about in subcommittee reports. Those are the two economic development articles. Uh, we'd still need to vote those. And then the only other question left would be, are there any other articles that the Board of Selectmen would like to vote on? From any of the other departments? And if so, if we could know before next Monday, then we could be prepared to have someone, um,
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. So at this time, what I'd like to do is, um, gentlemen, you all have the warrant articles in front of you. If there's something you have questions on, please send, uh, email off to Mr. Denizio and Mr. Sagorino, um, and discuss it so we can get it on the agenda for next Monday night. Um, does that work for you, John?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Um, so you're all set, Mr. Denizio, at this point?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, you're back on, you're back on, up at bat?
I think that's pretty much the end of, uh, we have on the agenda, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, so on to your usual, um, discussion over who gets to go first on subcommittee reports and that. And now, just while John Sanchez is here, I know, um, he wanted to update the board on, I know that, uh, we've were able to release some of the restrictions on the trash services, so, you know, while we have them, if you could just run through those dates, uh, for us, so that hopefully the general public can see that, uh, which services are being restored on.
News is that as of now, uh, pretty much, uh, everything that we do for trash collection is back to normal. Uh, the only exception is, uh, bulky waste, uh, which is, uh, your furniture and, uh, white goods, which we're working with Republic, they're trying to get a date on when they're gonna restore that service to us. But everything else, including yard waste, started this week. Uh, we have the additional, uh, orange bags for overflow, which we started that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and also the, uh, the recycling bags, the pink bags, they're also, uh, back to, uh, weekly pickups on those as well. So, uh, so that's really good news, uh, to our residents, and I do wanna thank them for their help. When we requested them to, uh, not to put those extra trash bags out there, they, they complied close to a hundred percent. And that really helped us during that time in which, uh, the Republic Services was working on a skeleton crew, uh, during the pandemic. So, uh, so thank you to all our residents and just now, obviously, since we waited so long to get the yard waste picked up, it's gonna, it's a little heavy. So it's gonna take some time to go through all the neighborhoods, but, uh, but they are out there doing the work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I do have a comment. Um, I don't know how Mr. S- Sagorino did it, but in my chairman's report, I do have all the dates for all the yard waste and stuff, but we're not even in the same room and he's still stealing my chairman's report. I gotta figure out how you guys do this every week. I really gotta figure this out. Uh, Mr. Sanchez, you should not be laughing because you need a haircut, my friend. I've never seen.
I know.
You're on TV and everything. I mean, this is crazy right now. That's why I think I'm an essential personnel, but we'll talk about that on another date. And Paul, thank you very much for my chairman's report. I can go home now. All right, so gentlemen. All right. Um, you will, you would, would, uh, somebody like to do the minutes before we get into the reports?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, not to get into all of them, but I'm going to abstain on February twenty-fourth and March ninth. Just as we go through, just so everybody knows.
Okay, fantastic. Bob's gonna abstain from those two, so what we'll do is we'll do them, um, individually. And then, uh, the April twenty-seventh, uh, is postponed. So we'll start off with, uh, February twenty-fourth, and we'll go, uh, Mr. Hogan?
I'm abstaining on that one.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, yeah, um, do you need a motion, Joe, to approve these or just?
Oh, I do.
Yes, no? I'm gonna motion to approve meeting, motion to approve minutes, uh, of the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty meeting.
Second. Motion is second. Um, Mr. Hogan, you're abstaining, right?
Correct.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm motion to approve the meeting minutes of March ninth, two thousand twenty.
Motion by Mike, second by? Somebody say something?
Second, oh, Nick seconded.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan's abstaining?
Correct.
Right. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi, yes. Betty, did you get those two?
Yep, all set.
Okay, thank you. Um, you wanna make a motion on the next three?
Sure, why not? March, uh, a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-third, twenty twenty interview session.
You wanna do all three of them at once, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, and add, uh, amend the motion to include the regular session minutes of, uh, the March twenty-third, twenty twenty meeting as well as our minutes of our meeting on April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, so all those in favor, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. Now we're gonna go to subcommittees. Um, we are gonna start with the subcommittees, so Mr. Priest, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so there's subcommittees, um, everything is moving on, uh, pretty well, given, uh, circumstances. Folks are meeting virtually, uh, conducting meetings, sharing documents, um, you know, all per the, the, uh, loosened, uh, open being laws. Uh, I struck forth by Governor Baker, um, uh, Chuck and Ryan and I, uh, as well as, uh, Paul, and I believe John Denizio was there as well. Uh, the whole Calico Club of People, uh, attended the, uh, Economic Development Subcommittee after our last maintenance meeting. Uh, we wanted to circle up with, uh, Melissa and discuss the two warrant articles specifically, um, around, um, her plans for those. Um, I think overall the conversation went well. Um, you know, both Chuck and Ryan and I, I, I won't speak for him, he can obviously, you know, chime in, uh, but express their concerns just around, uh, you know, the, the financing of everything, given, given the situation that we're in. But, uh, also understanding that, you know, what Melissa is trying to do is, um, put Burlington in a more proactive position, uh, and, you know, really start to partner in a more open light with developers so that, you know, when developers come to the community looking to, uh, you know, either, you know, create or recreate something, uh, that instead of just saying, no, we don't like that, um, you know, we have a sense of a vision, um, in place. Um, and I really appreciate that, that, that forethought, um, and that effort behind that. Um, I actually don't know if this, if this next thing belongs to anybody, so I apologize, uh, but, uh, Roger Manazian, uh, who's on the, uh, Scholarship Committee, uh, had emailed me, uh, last week to, to kinda give me an update, that's why they shared it with everybody. I know that, you know, the, the classic twenty-twenty is experiencing a very unique, uh, end of, uh, you know, uh, uh, public education, you know, experience, uh, but that being said, this year, uh, the Scholarship Committee through a, a line process, they don't know the names of the, of the students, received seventy-five, uh, highly competitive applications, uh, this year for the scholarship. And, uh, she wanted to let us know that, uh, they selected three students to receive twenty-five hundred dollars each. So those three students, uh, were, were selected, you know, based on the criteria that this committee has set forth. Um, as well as the, this committee a couple of times has, has let me know that, um, they're really trying to lay the foundation for whichever, whoever replaces them as the committee evolves and grows over the years, uh, there's almost a, a playbook of processes, uh, that they've really been trying to work on. So I give them a lot of credit from that perspective, uh, as they, you know, kind of forge, forge this ground. Um, just a, just a huge thank you, obviously, to, you know, all of our directors and staff, uh, during the budgeting season for what is, you know, a very strange time. Uh, I think, uh, you know, we, we've all said it, but, um, really appreciate, you know, everyone, you know, sharpening their pencils, tightening the belt, um, and looking for places where we can, you know, preserve, um, you know, our economic status to ensure that the town makes it through this, uh, with as minimal scathing as possible. Um, and then lastly, I, I, it's probably impossible for you on camera, but I'm wearing a semi-colon pin button tonight. Uh, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, um, and so just, you know, uh, a big shout out to all our mental health, uh, employees, those of us, uh, you know, or tho- those who help, uh, those in need. Um, it's really, uh, critical for this city in, in, in these times. Uh, and I just wanted to share really quick, uh, just from the CDC, some general, um, mental health guidelines, they're extremely short, so I apologize. Uh, but they say, be kind to your mind, uh, five tips for coping with stress during, uh, COVID nineteen. One, pause. Three, notice how you feel. Two, take breaks from COVID nineteen content. Three, make time to sleep and exercise. Four, reach out and stay connected. And five, seek help if overwhelmed or unsafe. Um, so just short little things, you know, I know that we're all dealing with a lot right now, whether you're home alone or, you know, uh, trapped with your family, um, whatever your circumstances may be, uh, but, you know, we're, uh, we're all in together, so I appreciate everything everyone's doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, Nick alluded to the, uh, the Zoom conference we had, um, uh, revolving around the economic, economic development, um, uh, warrant articles. I think he summed it up rather nicely. Um, I also participated in a, a Zoom conference, uh, with the Middlesex Three. I believe Paul, Paul jumped in on that as well as Melissa. Um, Secretary, uh, Mike Caneely from DHCD was the guest speaker that day. Uh, I've also had some conversations with Rick Parker from our, our own, uh, Burlington area Chamber of Commerce. Um, I, I, I'm telling you that, um, Melissa and, and Paul and, uh, Mr. Denizio, uh, they've been in contact with, with all of these folks, uh, and they are on a regular basis and, and they all get high marks from the people I've spoken to in regards to their, their cooperation. Uh, business community, as you can well imagine, is a lot of, uh, angst and, and, and unknowns, uh, for them. And, uh, you know, there, there may be a role for us as, uh, Board of Selectmen, um, in, in the near future to help them. in the near future to help them out in some fashion, so we'll certainly keep you posted on that. But the business community is certainly a very important part of what we do here in Burlington. And, you know, any help that we can offer to keep them viable and sustainable. You know, I think I speak for all of you when I'm talking to them, saying they would get good support from this board. So soon, I think soon, we'll start hearing from businesses and what we can do to help. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Hogan?
Um, I only have one quick thing from the Police Department. When I was talking to a couple of the members, they didn't even realize that Jimmy had retired yet.
I want to give some numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. And the comeback will be, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. One, just to follow up on what Selectmen Runyon said about restaurants and the businesses, it's just asking residents if they can support our local businesses, support the family-owned businesses. Do whatever you can to help our businesses keep their head above water. You know, we're trying to do our part. We're just asking to, I'm asking that the residents just support local businesses as much as you can. And on a more serious note, though, is, and Selectmen Runyon, correct me if I'm wrong, the call volume for the fire department has dropped. But, you know, if it's, if, and we've heard in the news that a lot of people aren't, are afraid to go to the hospital, or they're afraid to call 911 because of something that might be going on due to the COVID crisis. But if you don't feel well, if something's just not right, just don't hesitate to call 911, because, you know, you just never know. No, don't take that chance. If you need any medical help, you need ambulance, just call 911. And I'm sure, and I know the Burlington Fire Department will definitely take care of you. I know that from experience. But just don't hesitate to call if you think you need some help. That's all.
Thank you. We'll do the Chairman's Report real quick. Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sagarino at this point before I get into a couple of things here. Mr. Sagarino, I would like to have you speak on behalf of the gentleman that was there. I did not make it to the parade to thank the Leahy Clinic workers there. So if you could bring that up real quick, and I heard nothing but great things about it, and then I'll go back to my Chairman's Report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The event was amazing. I actually watched it from TRW Park, parking lot with Selectmen Runyon and Selectmen Hogan. I know that Selectmen Priest made it all the way down to Ground Zero there, but the parade went on for miles. It was amazing how many neighboring communities participated, and tow trucks, and fire and boom apparatus, and the med flight was buzzing up the building. So it really was quite a massive event, and I know the news was there, and it was very well organized, and I think it was very well received by our friends and neighbors. I don't know if Paul, Mike, and Nick want to throw anything to that, but the parade went on for quite some time. I was pretty impressed with the watch in person.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry I didn't make it. I've seen the video. I've talked to a lot of people about it, and I heard how fantastic it was. I'd like to thank the town of Burlington for being involved in it, the way they were, and all the other surrounding towns. I heard there was, from Lynn, you guys were there, you know how many different cars were there? Mike, anything on that?
Nothing, nothing really to add, Joe. A great turnout. Med flight helicopter was in the air, and with apparatus from Logan Airport, and, you know, several surrounding communities. So, yeah, it was quite a tribute to the folks down there at Leahy Hospital, who are certainly deserving of that tribute. So, yeah, it was nice to be able to watch.
Thank you. Nick, being that close, anything? Any comment?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty incredible, Mr. Chairman, you know. I mean, you know, it wasn't just local folk, I mean, you know, first responders from all the, from Salem and Lynn, all the way down to the South Shore, it was absolutely incredible. I went down with my wife and kids. We were up there by the East entrance, and I mean, the healthcare workers were just, you know, overjoyed. It was, it was very, very nice.
Thank you. And Mr. Hogan, you were the other one that had gone to it?
I did, and it really was impressive to see how many people participated. And members of our police and our fire departments who helped organize this ought to be applauded for that effort.
Thank you. And Jim, you didn't make it, right? Like I didn't make it? We were occupied. You were retired. I was working.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I did see the video. It did look like a tremendous event, and unfortunately, wasn't able to make it. But thank you to everyone who assisted, and thank you to the staff at Leahy Clinic. You guys are saviors.
Great. Thank you. Back to my Chairman's Report. Just really quick, I want to thank Joanne, Whitney, and Deb. I didn't do it earlier tonight for the new hires that we have. I would also like to thank Mr. Denizio for all the work he puts in when we do hire someone. Our staff up here in the Selectmen's offices, fantastic. Don't know what we'd do without some of the workers that we have here. The other thing I'd like to say real quick is, you know, you guys from the Fire Department and Police Department, you're out there every day. We get reports, and the town's been very, very helpful overall, as the residents have been really good with their phone calls and just on their end alone. So I want to thank everybody involved. It's been, it's been a long eight weeks. We don't know if next week's gonna be the end of this thing. We'll be able to go back to work or part-time or whatever we're gonna do, but everybody's hanging in there. So that's all I can really say on the Chairman's Report. I will go over, Nick, you've been monitoring this. Anybody out there that's watching it has under citizen's time?
No, sir. No one has it right now.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you have anything to add?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of items for the board. The first one is just want to let the board know that we've been working with the committee in terms of reopening, getting town halls back, that's been ready to reopen for the government reopening. Just received a lot of help on that from John Denizio, Joanne Fowles, John Sanchez, and of course, and all of our guidance from Susan Womelo. So we hope to have an update out to the board by the end of the week, based upon what we heard from Governor Baker this morning. So we'll have some more details on that coming up for the board. Also work with our union presidents on that reopening, just in terms of how we bring our employees back safely and we can continue to serve the public. So that's hopefully something we can provide some more info by the end of the week. And just a positive note to thank the community. I think everybody knows we had a young lady that was missing last weekend. And I know from talking to Chief Kent, they were overwhelmed with the support that we received from the community. There were people out walking around, there were people checking their backyard. So the community really came together to try to help out the police in that incident. And I know that, in fact, a couple of the tips were very helpful in tracking down and making it a happy ending. So I just want to thank the residents again. As always, they always come up big when we need them. And in this particular case, we got a very hell ending, a very scary situation. So I just want to thank all the residents for assisting us with that. Sure, it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that note, I'll leave a motion to close the hearing.
No move.
Motion made by Bob, second by?
Mike.
Mike, we're gonna have to have a roll call vote. Last time I ran out a little too fast, I think. So this time we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon? Yes. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 500 ready. Good night, everybody. Thank you once again.
Good night. Good job, Joe.
Thank you.